All right, I have a gavel. Here we go. All right, it is after six P M. So we're going to commence the November seventh. Excuse me, this is the December. I got the wrong one in front of me. What is this December? Fifth zoning board of appeals meeting calling into order. Roll call. Looks like we're fairly full staffed, missing two. We have a quorum, which is excellent. First order of business is minutes from the November meeting, which I was not an attendance. But I saw that we had a quorum there as well. Anyone anyone have any edits or a motion to approve those minutes?
I moved to approve the minutes from the November seventh meeting.
I second that.
First and second, all those in favor. Meetings from minutes from the meeting in November are approved. Organizational procedural items staff, nothing. All right. And before we get into the unfinished or excuse me, the new business, I know there's no unfinished business as well. So before we get into the cases this evening, I'll read the zoning board of appeals chairman's preamble, which reads like this. It reminds everyone that the zoning board of appeals is charged with the responsibility of granting variances to ordinance requirements. After determining whether there exists an undue hardship upon an applicant. In determining whether or not to grant a variance, the board shall apply the criteria specified in the city code of ordinances to the facts of each case. The zoning board of appeals does not create zoning, nor can it change zoning. Matters brought before the zoning board of appeals are to be concerned only with variances from requirements of the zoning ordinance, sign ordinance. And development and environmental ordinance, the board has no authority to grant variances for use, density or height. Further, the board hears cases requesting an appeal to a staff interpretation or decision on these same ordinances. Final decisions of the zoning board of appeals may be appealed by petitioning the superior court of DeKalb County within thirty days after the decision here is rendered. With that, we can proceed to the new business of the evening.
All right. Hi, everyone. So the first case of the evening is for fourteen hundred Vernon Ridge Close. And they're requesting two variances, a stream buffer variance to allow a porch to encroach into the seventy five foot stream buffer. And a zoning variance to allow a porch to encroach into the front setback. So the subject property is owned R one hundred and it's point six acres. There's a drainage easement located along the western property line and a ten foot sanitary sewer easement runs along the southern property line. The stream and associated buffers are located along the western edge of the property. And approximately half of the existing house and all of an existing rear deck are located in the seventy five foot stream buffer. You can see the stream buffer outlined in blue on the survey to the right. And the photos to the left show the existing front of the house and the existing rear deck. So the applicant proposes to demolish the existing rear deck and construct a larger five hundred and thirty three square foot porch in its place. A portion of the rear porch will be built over existing concrete. And the entirety of it will encroach into the seventy five foot stream buffer prompting a variance request. The applicant is also proposing to construct a two hundred and eighty square foot porch to the front of the house. Which will be partially built over an existing stoop. And which will encroach into the front setback by a maximum of four feet prompting a zoning variance request. So you can see the proposed rear porch in yellow and the proposed front porch in red on the site plan to the right. And then to the left, you can see the proposed elevations. The seventy five foot and twenty five foot stream buffers cover almost two thirds of the property and almost the entirety of the rear yard. Making it almost impossible for the homeowner to make any improvements to the rear of the house without encroaching into the buffer. There is existing concrete underneath parts of the location of the proposed porch, so increasing it is a relatively minor project. A rear porch is a standard improvement for most homeowners and many of the other homes in the Mount Vernon subdivision have rear porches, including several of a similar size to the applicant's proposed project. While other properties in the subdivision have a stream buffer on their property, the majority do not. The subject property meets the minimum standards for lot area and width. However, the existing house was built right up to the thirty five foot front setback. Making it challenging for the applicant to make improvements to the front of the house without encroaching into that setback. There's a small existing stoop that encroaches into the front setback and the applicant is proposing to replace that with a front porch, which staff considers a relatively minor improvement. The encroachment of the proposed porch is also relatively minor at only four feet, appearing to be the minimum necessary to afford relief. Staff finds that the strict application of the setback requirements could cause practical difficulty by not allowing for incremental changes to the property. And overall, staff finds that the project would not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare. And that the requested variances would be consistent with the spirit and purpose of the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan. So based on these reasons, staff is recommending approval of the request subject, excuse me, to both of our standard conditions shown on the screen here.
Thank you. Any questions for staff initially? Okay, would the applicant care to approach the board and state your name and address and your case for the variance?
My name is Kelly Thames Malden, and this is my husband, Richard. And fourteen hundred Vernon Ridge Close is our address. And for the front porch, we have a very active cul-de-sac, so we wanted to be a part of that. Both houses on either side of us both have a front porch. Also, our house faces east, and so when the sun rises. We get a blast of sunshine, which is lovely, except in the summer. And it causes fading and things like that. So actually, that front porch will help shield our house. And make us hopefully more energy efficient by shielding us from so much sun. The back screen and porch. It's, we love being outdoors, but the mosquitoes through spring to the summer are. Well, they're very prolific, and so we would like to enjoy more of our backyard. And so the screen and porch would allow that. And again, our neighbors on either side also have a screen and porch as well. So we just want to keep up with the gemses, I guess. But through health, through health wise with the mosquitoes and the sun. There would be great improvements for our lives and hopefully for the neighborhood.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else want to speak in favor? Of variants? I don't think we have any opposition registered. So with that, any questions?
I'll start. Let's stop the rear deck, the rear porch, rather. So you're taking out something that's there already?
Correct.
And then you're placing it with the.
Screened in porch.
Yeah.
The rear.
Rear deck and replacing it with another deck, but part of it will be screened down where it's not.
Okay, but as far as the size is concerned, are you covering the same area?
We are going to extend about two feet out and about four or five feet over. We were just going to go ahead and go to the end of the house, so it'll look a little more unified as well.
Okay, okay. So you're looking at two feet and two feet?
On two and maybe four or five.
Okay, okay, okay. And the front porch, I think if I read and I think I did everything, is the same, four feet, four feet. Meaning you have four feet stoop right now, you're going to take those out and you're going to put a porch for four.
Yeah, we're going to go through the front of the house and and out.
It's probably an additional.
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Yeah. And what's the condition of the present? Porch that you have in the back now?
It's the deck.
Is it in?
It's older and weird. It's it probably needs to be looked at structurally. I mean, it's fine, but.
Is it deteriorating maybe?
Is it what?
Deteriorating?
It's older. I mean, it came with the house and we've been there twenty, almost eighteen years. So it's time to maybe reassess structure.
Okay, all right, I'm good.
Yeah, just a point of clarification. So the front step and maybe staff, I missed this, then is already four feet into the variance? No?
It is not. Currently, we are not in.
Okay, right.
It's just a stoop.
So.
Just stoop. Wanting to replace the stoop.
And extend it, I'll say beyond.
Because it's curved. It's just part of it is not all of it, but just.
Good question.
Curved because of the cul-de-sac, it will cut into part of.
Yeah, yeah.
If we stop where the variances, it's going to look weird.
Yeah.
I think the house was built right up to the setback, so they have no, you know, no leeway without variance.
Yeah, that's good. That's where my question was initially going, and it stopped at the four feet, but I kind of, because the four feet wouldn't make sense if it's just a little smaller.
If it gets right at.
Yeah, it's just one corner. Closest to the garage, I think, is a little close.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Make a motion. I'm gonna go that. Move to approve the requests for variance from chapter sixteen, section seventy eight, to allow a home addition to encroach into the seventy five foot stream buffer. And for a variance from chapter twenty seven, section fifty eight, to allow a porch to encroach in the front setback with the following conditions. Number one, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan prepared by Georgia land surveying dated eight twenty eight, twenty twenty four. And drawn upon by the applicant, please refer to appendix A. And number two, if construction has not commenced within two years of the granting of this variance, approval shall be void. And this is for Z B A twenty four dash eighteen at fourteen hundred Vernon Vernon Ridge Close.
I second.
But first and a second for approval of the application, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We'll proceed to the second case, Z B A twenty four dash nineteen.
Thank you. So this case is for fifty thirty one Oak Trail Drive, and they're requesting a variance to allow retaining walls to encroach into the rear and side setback. So the property is owned R one hundred and it's point three four acres. They have a ten foot drainage easement along the northern, eastern and southern property lines. A portion of an existing retaining wall encroaches into the ten foot drainage easement along the northern property line. You can see the, you can see that outlined in red on the survey to the left. In twenty twenty one, without permits, the applicant installed a maximum four foot tall retaining wall in the rear yard, which encroaches into the rear setback and side setback. And again, you can see that outlined in red on the survey to the left, and there are photos of it on the right. Additionally, the existing lot coverage for the property forty three point six percent exceeds the maximum allowed lot coverage by three point six percent. So the applicant is requesting a variance to maintain a portion of the existing retaining wall in its existing location. That's outlined in red on the site plan to the left. And they're also going to construct a new maximum four foot tall retaining wall to accommodate a pool installation. That's shown in black on the site plan to the left. So a portion of the retaining wall is going to be removed and then replaced with a retaining wall of a similar height, but in a different location. And then part of it is going to stay the same. And so the one that's going to stay the same is in red on the left and the one that's in black. And the one that's going to, that's going to be new is in black. So both the existing and new retaining wall will encroach a maximum of thirteen feet into the rear setback. And a maximum of five feet into the side setback prompting a variance request. All portions of the wall within the drainage easement will be removed, so there will be no more encroachment into the drainage easement. And the applicant will bring the lot coverage into compliance by reducing it to thirty nine percent through a replacement of a portion of the driveway with permeable pavers. So the request here tonight is simply for the retaining walls. But I mentioned those other aspects as they're relevant to the project that the applicant is doing, and they're going to be installing that new pool. The encroachment of the retaining wall into the rear inside setbacks would normally prompt a special administrative permit. However, in this case, since it's already constructed, they're going through the variance process. So the subject property meets the minimum standards for lot area and width. However, the property slopes down approximately twenty feet from the rear property line to the front property line, creating a fairly steep backyard. At a maximum of four feet, the retaining walls are relatively minor and appear to be the minimum necessary to create flat areas in the rear yard. And to construct the pool without accounting for the unique conditions of the site, the strict application of the setbacks could prevent incremental changes to the use of the property, which staff considers a practical difficulty. Additionally, as part of a larger project, the applicant is proposing to bring the lot coverage into compliance. Staff is very supportive of that request, as well as to remove the portion of the retaining wall that's in the drainage easement, and staff is also very supportive of that aspect. So overall, staff finds that the project would not be detrimental to the public health, safety or welfare, and that the request meets the spirit and intent of the zoning ordinance. We received four letters in support of the project and those were included in the packet. Based on these reasons, staff is recommending approval of the request, subject to our standard conditions.
Oh. I have two clarification questions. So you mentioned the drainage easement, and we saw that on the map. And I know that the prior case also had a drainage easement on their property. Can you just clarify what a drainage easement is, please?
Yeah, so a drainage easement, and Paul might need to jump in to help me out here, but a drainage easement is the portion of the property that is that is reserved for sort of drainage purposes. And so constructing something in a drainage easement. Means that if the county needs to go in and sort of look at that area, it might need to be removed. And so that's why we don't allow the the items to be located in there.
Got it. Okay. And then also, I think on the prior slide. Showing the setbacks and and the mapping of the, yes. I couldn't figure out where the setbacks are on this. I can see the drainage easement.
Yeah, there's a, there's a lot going on here. So the ten foot side setback is here. If you're able to see my mouse.
I do, yeah.
It sort of goes right to the corner of the house up here.
Okay.
And so the ten foot drainage easement, only five feet of that is on the applicant's property, the other five feet is across the other side, if that was causing confusion.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, so the drainage easement right here spans across the property line.
Okay.
So this is the the ten foot side setback, and then the forty foot rear setback runs down here. So it sort of goes partway through the existing gravel walkway and what's labeled as the canopy.
Got it. Okay, so the existing retaining wall is almost completely in the rear setback. And then there's a portion of it at the top of the slide or the map that's in the side setback.
That's correct.
Okay, and in the drainage. Okay, thank you.
One more quick question, sorry, just because I see it on the map. The 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 mark demarcation for four foot aluminum fence, is that existing today?
Yes.
Okay, and is that in compliance with cities current? Is it like I can't tell from the pictures if it's, okay, I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay, would the applicant care to? Address the board?
My name is John Spurling, and I am the homeowner of fifty thirty one Oak Trail Drive. My wife, myself and three kids and a dog moved to the house three and a half years ago. We live in the branches, love the neighborhood, love the house. But we missed a very important factor when we moved in. We went under contract on a beautiful sunny day. The yard was beautiful and we have three kids. We moved into the house and then all of a sudden we experienced a very severe flooding problem in our backyard. The slope of the backyard, now we'll walk you guys through, they say that photos show or speak a thousand words. Let me see if I can show you guys. I'm going to, it's not shown on the screen. But if I can have one split second. Which you are seeing, of course, on the screen. Oops.
We're seeing the after, you're saying, yeah.
The other property. So that is the end product. You guys mind if I approach you guys?
Quite right, yeah.
So this is our backyard. You can see all the mud. Close to the house. And that was reported in the spring, it was beautiful, and like I said, all of a sudden, we moved in. And we had a major.
And we halted, can I see?
Yeah. But the the drainage easement was revealed to you, divulged at the time of purchase, right? So you knew there's a drainage, drainage, you probably didn't know the extent of the damage, but you knew there was a drainage issue probably back there, right? Yeah.
So when that happened. He, I'm not turning. I did some research and I looked at the codes for Dunwoody. And I could find that there was a four foot height requirement for the purpose of getting a permit, not a permit, but I. Think a permit or a various perhaps. I didn't realize that there was a forty foot setback that would apply for a two and a half foot high wall, which is what we ultimately built. Our landscaper suggesting building a small retaining wall, which we did, and that frankly cured the problem. So we have a great backyard, no rain issues, no flooding issues. Three and a half years later, we decided that we wanted to try to build a pool. So the retaining wall that we have in existence, which is frankly, I would say necessary for us to enjoy our backyard. Because when we moved in and the flooding and the rain and the mud started, we couldn't even let our dog out in the yard, frankly, because he would get his paws full of mud. And come back into the house. So we built a wall, we've enjoyed the house for three and a half years. At this point, we're hoping to be able to build a pool and what that would require would be for us to push the existing wall. A few feet to be able to carve enough space for us to be able to place the pool as it is shown on the on the drawing. I feel that a lot of the houses in my neighborhood have retaining walls for the same reason, because the branches is somewhat hilly. A lot of the houses in my neighborhood have a pool, which I'm fifty six years old, I work super hard, I have three kids. We would love to have a pool if possible. And at the end of the day, I feel that what we're asking for is not outside the scope of what is pretty consistent with the neighborhood. The frankly, if you, if the board was to deny my request for the variance for the wall, we would ultimately have to move from the house. Because we wouldn't be able to build a pool. But technically, we would have to remove the existing wall that we have built that allow us to enjoy the backyard. And with without the existing wall. Kids can play in the yard, the dog can go in the yard, we're outdoorsy people. It would really impact us severely. I think that our proposition or our request for a three and a half foot wall is frankly. Doesn't exceed the minimum requirements that are provided in the code. I think that it's consistent with the code, and I would kindly ask for you guys to approve the various request. Something that I included in the materials that we provided on the intent letter was the corrective measures that we are were willing to. Take upon. Our driveway is literally a very old driveway that where the concrete is cracking. So we came up with the idea that we would replace a large part of the driveway, which we were going to replace with new concrete anyways, with permeable pavers. We had a study done, we had a company that does studies of the, I guess. Appropriateness of surfaces for the installation of permeable pavers. We did provide a copy of that study to the city. The city were awesome in working with me and kind of guiding me through all the requirements that we needed to do from the site plan to the survey and to the study. Geolog, I think geological study or something like that, that deals with the availability of the ground absorbing the water for permeable pavers. We provide. We provided them with that study and we intend to come within compliance by setting up a large portion of the driveway with permeable pavers so that we can come in within the forty percent impervious requirement. I think that they also, Allegra also mentioned the water easement. We have a literally one and a, maybe one foot high tiny retaining wall on the left that is within the water easement. So we will be removing that and replacing it with river rock so that the water can allow, can flow through the side of the house. But I think that's, that's pretty much I could, what I can say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Send favor. Great. Thank you. Michael, would you care to come and address the board and speak in favor of? Yeah, you need to go to the, yeah, just, yes.
First, you can tell he's a lawyer by the way he talked. Those, I'm the house directly behind him.
Just sorry, Michael, just take your name and address real quick.
Man, hello. Michael Rubin, fifty thirty two Trail Ridge Way, Dunwoody, Georgia, three oh three three eight. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
So he, as he said, he's lived there for a few years and done nothing but improve the property. I'm literally, we share. I mean, if you can look down on the screen, that back fence is my house. So I'm just. Yep. Yeah. I mean, the picture there, I don't know. How do I do this?
Yeah, it's fine.
By the way, one, two, three. There you go. So the house up on the top there is me.
Okay.
So I mean, I've seen major improvements through, but you can see I'm higher up. So all the water from my house goes to his house. So I mean, for me, this wouldn't impact me, but I'm glad to see that the water had been directed because it would kind of back up that hill onto my property and create like a little, like puddles behind the fences, the fence area. So that was great when he did that. We have a pool that we put in. Thankfully, we didn't need any variances just because of how our property is and sits. But I'm all for it. Like, I mean, anything to improve the properties and people wanting to live in Dunwoody. And I just feel like, you know, if we don't allow certain projects like that are just kind of normal, like a pool or a porch or things like that, that aren't really causing a problem, especially if the homeowner is willing to mitigate any other type of issues that would come with it. I mean, I think that's what as a city we should be doing. It certainly adds to the, to the quaintness and how much people love living here. So I see, you know, I mean, it won't, I mean, I'll be the most affected by the construction for sure. Because everybody else sits away from him. So I, and we, we don't care. We'd love to have him do it.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you.
I approached, I'm very friendly with my neighbors. I approached my neighbor in the back, this gentleman, who we had actually not met before. I started, we, we met as a just, I love your pool because I can see it from my bathroom window. So he was very kind in signing a letter. I went to my right hand neighbor. Actually, they greatly benefit from the retaining wall that I built because the water that would go straight down the hill into their property was redirected by the retaining wall that I built on the left side of the property. I went to my neighbor next door on my left and the right. I have letters from both of them where they actually do not oppose the project. And I even went to the neighbor across the street who frankly can't see the retaining wall because we have a fence. But he also signed the letter. So I do have four letters from my neighbor in the back, two neighbors on both sides and the neighbor across the street, basically stating that they have absolutely no position to my request for the variance for either the side setback wall nor the back set.
Well, yeah, we, we got the letters in packet too. Thank you. That's great. Yeah. Board, any questions?
You want to close it?
Oh, sorry. Close it for public comment. Now I'll be opening for board comment.
Yeah, I got a question. Mr. Spurling, question? We have a question. Okay, nevermind. Tell me, what, who built the wall?
Who did the wall?
Yeah, was it a company?
No, it was the landscaper. So when we started trying to plant seed initially, the water problem persisted. So my landscaper ended up doing the wall. It's his, he does pavers. He did our paver. We have a bunch of pavers in the patio. So he's the one that did the pavers for the patio. And he's the one that built the retaining wall.
Okay. No, I mean, the reason I ask, I'll tell you straight away is because a lot of times if it's like a, if it's a contractor or somebody that should know that they're gonna get, they should know the laws or should know that they're should get whatever compliance that they have to, then you're a little bit less forgiving. But if it's somebody like a, that didn't know, like if you did it yourself or something else, then you're like, oh, okay. So that's why I asked the question, who actually built the wall for you?
So frankly, I'm gonna take responsibility. I will blame people when I need to blame people and I'll take responsibility when I have to take responsibility. I'm an attorney and I did the research on the, in fact, at the same time as we were building the, the stone patio. We got a permit to build a covered porch. And as I did the research, I knew that I needed a permit for the covered porch. We filed our request. We got the permit from the city. We built the covered porch. When the water problem persisted, I did the research once again and I saw the requirement for a permit for a four foot high wall. I, I'm sorry, but I did really genuinely did not realize that I needed a permit for a two foot high retaining wall. So I, I didn't realize that there was a setback. I didn't even consider that there was frankly, a forty foot setback for a two foot high retaining wall. So I just told the landscaper, right? Let's go ahead and build it. And he did. So I did get my permit. I did apply for the permit for the covered patio. I got my permit. I did it with a contractor and I had no idea that I needed to request a permit for the retaining wall.
Okay.
So I'll take responsibility for that. I'm not going to put it on the contractor. I'm gonna put it on me because I'm the one that did the research and didn't realize that I needed to file for a permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I had just some comments. As he just explained, the height of the wall would not have, it would only have required a special administrative permit to be in the forty foot setback. The drainage easement area, I don't know that that could have been approved, but so just as it was, had he known about the setback, it would have just required a special administrative permit. And the fact that he's going to be removing the portion of the wall that's in the drainage easement as part of this project if approved. And the fact that it will be, the project will be reducing the impermeable surface so that it's below the forty percent threshold, the coverage. I think that this is a valid, I, I think that the situation merits approving the variance because of the, because of what he's planning to do to bring it into compliance and because of what only would have been required, had he known about the setbacks in the first place. So I'm good with it unless anybody else has anything that they want to.
I, I greatly appreciate that and I, I would like to say one more thing.
You might, you might, you're an attorney. You might want to slow down. Yeah. And that's what you said, you know? Unless you really feel like you have to say something, but you, you, the whole idea is to help your case. But anyway, I'm not.
Maybe I'll shut up.
Thank you. I do, I do have one question and maybe it'll test some degree of attorney privilege here and what have you, but you know, you got, it's nice. I'm looking at an aerial Google satellite image of it and the whole project makes sense, scope of it and everything you're doing is great. And I, I personally run into that situation that you're talking about where you didn't know. And so that's all fine. But you, you guys were talking about the runoff and how we're, you guys are kind of helping to mitigate that. But where, where's the runoff post-project really going to go to? If it's not going to be at your neighbors behind you? I, I mean, is, where is it naturally running? Because it was previously kind of running up to the back of your house, right? That's why you put the original retention wall in. And so I presume that it helped. Yes, the water flow.
The drains.
So where's like, I know there's an easement, but where does it ultimately go? I'm like looking at the topography. It almost looks like it's kind of going to your neighbor on the right. But I don't quite know. I'm just generally curious. And, and maybe it's a question for the city or I don't know, but I can't see it's like a little retention point. I mean, there's clearly no, it probably goes into that vegetation between you and your neighbor.
So the way that our retaining wall sit up right now. So the water that comes down the hill, it's a, like a pipe with little holes that, that sits right.
So there's a drain. Yeah, you've essentially created a, a French drain.
It's redirected.
Okay.
To a pipe.
Yes.
To a block.
Yep. A corrugated, corrugated pipe and it's probably, are you taking that all the way to the street or something or?
It actually goes down my driveway.
Okay, so, so like a pop of a minute. Okay.
I can see literally
Yep.
the marking of the water that's being directed to my concrete driveway, which now will be partially
Great.
driveway, concrete and permeable pavers and the water runs down the.
Perfect. I was just generally curious. I've had to do that myself.
And, and, and the new wall will be exactly the same, really. It'll redirect the water.
Okay. Great. Thank you so much for that clarification. Thank you.
Now, I mean, for me, I mean, you guys kind of know me in some of these things. I, I, I'm satisfied with the, with the explanation. It's the one that says, I'm gonna do it. Next thing you know, you know, I'll see what happens. You know, that doesn't seem to be the, and the fact that actually Mr. Spurling got permits for other stuff speaks value. Because how do you know, you would have gotten another, another platform, not perfect. So that, that for me is, is satisfactory. And then, you know, the project, it looks nice. It's not, the, the neighbors is not affected.
Or if, yeah, I would say.
Yes, yeah, 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 yeah.
What, what I wanted to say also is when I went to the city before starting this project, I was warned that I was out of compliance with the impervious area. I was warned that I was out of compliance with the water easement that I didn't even have a clue existed on the left side of my property. And I was told that if I actually did not pursue the project, that probably nothing would happen. I'm an attorney. I follow the rules and I figured, you know what? I will fall within compliance. No problem. I'm going to go ahead and do what I need to do. I'll apply for the variance. I will take the corrective measures that I need to take so that I can be well within compliance. So I am hopeful that you guys will approve my various requests. Since I requested, requested a permit for my patio, got it, built it. Now I'm going the right way, applying for a permit for the wall that I should have requested had I known. And at this point, I will take whatever corrective measures I need to take to bring the property. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sit down.
Okay, I, I move to approve. All right. I'm, I'm going to make a motion to approve the request for variance from chapter twenty seven, section two sixty nine to a law retaining walls to encroach into the rear inside setback with the following conditions. One, construction must be in substantial compliance with the submitted site plan drawn by the applicant in appendix A. Two, if construction is not commenced within two years of the granting in this variance, approval shall be void.
Second.
First and a second. All those in favor? All right. It's approved. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Appreciate the.
Well, now maybe he'll have cool envy of yours.
Inspirational. Yeah.
But thank you all, everybody.
There you go. No, thank you. All right. Yes. There is no other business, correct? All right. Public comment? Board comment? We are.
Oh, wait. I'm so sorry. I had one comment. I wanted to go into the, the record and it was about the first case that we had, ZB A twenty four eighteen. I just wanted it to, I wanted our records to show that though that homeowner, those homeowners, they really had no options based on the way that their house. I mean, part of their house was in the stream buster and the entire backyard was in the stream buffer. And their, the front of their house was built right up to the setback. So they had no option to expand anywhere there. So I just wanted that to, I wanted it to be noted that one of the reasons we granted that approval for that variance is because they had no options. Like I just, yes, it was a true hardship.
Yeah. And that's kind of common, right? To an extent, because of the way that the city has adopted ordinances that they inherited from the cab and so forth. So there, we're, we're a little stricter. So that adds to our use, our caseload sometimes, but I think it's, it merits a review and these, you guys always do a fantastic job. So that was a good, very thorough tonight, board. Appreciate that. With that, we're adjourned.
All right.
So that, those are my neighbors. And the first. And, oh, they're, they're wonderful. They about, about six years ago. There is.